Good evening everyone and welcome to the Full Council of Bexhill-on-Che Town Council tonight, Wednesday the 26th of November. Lovely to see so many members of the public here, which will be able to speak for the standard three minutes. Before we get to that stage, please can I remind everybody to turn their mobile phone off? At the very least, to put it on airplane mode because it does affect the recordings. Thank you very much. So move quickly on to item one, which is public participation. Could you please, if you're in the public wish to speak, could you please raise your hand to give us a... Two, one, two, three, four. Okay, so I'll start from here. If you could move towards the microphone in front. Introduce yourself and you have three minutes to speak.
Certainly, I'm Michael Matthews from Bexhill. In November 1993 at a Delaware event, I then spoke to the mayor and with other people stated, and she heard that, it was common knowledge who would be the next mayor of Bexhill. She stated that it shouldn't be and that the deputy mayor should be the one voted in next. In December, I was, she was proved wrong, I was right. In December 1994, I stated to councillors, some in here tonight, that it was common knowledge who would be voted in at the next mayor. Again, I was proved right. Now, in the last week, I've been told again who's going to be the next mayor. So what I'm asking tonight, and that is that someone, one of the councillors here, puts a proposal in, not that I agree or disagree, to go back to the old Rother District Council way of the mayor doing one year and then the deputy mayor at the end of that year takes over and a new deputy mayor. Because it shouldn't be that people who are on the street are hearing this so many times and names, and it could carry on and on and on. And perish the thought, you're not going to get councillors coming to it if there's already saying, why do we want to be councillors when things are common knowledge? Thank you.
Thank you. Answers will be provided in a minute. I think, I would like to say, I think you mean 2024, not 1994.
My apologies.
The next person who is going to speak? Again, if you could introduce yourself.
Yep. Evening. Victoria Carson, Collington Ward. I just noted on the agenda tonight that local government reorganisation is in a closed session and I just wondered why that would be after having spent so much money at the Delaware to have a public consultation, why this is now in private behind closed doors? So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person? Thank you.
Paul Brasford, resident of Collington Ward, Bexhill. The sculpture surplay at the roundabout, Klein Gap, is there any news, updates from Highways England? And which committee now looks after this project? At a meeting it was discussed about the villas next to the RDC office. The steps leading up to the building would be prohibited to wheelchairs, child prams and members of the public with problems of walking up steps. There are restricted access to BTC. It was also mentioned that the doors were not wide enough for disabled wheelchairs and prams. Who would pay for these building works, alterations, town council, RDC processes? At the full council meeting on the 29th of October, there was a discussion about Bexhill Town Council considering allocating £4,000 from general reserves to fund one-third of the hotel feasibility study in collaboration with Bexhill Neighbourhood Board and Rother District Council. Reference item 11B. The chair proposed the motion after declaring that he is a member of the neighbourhood board. He then voted on this matter, whereas he should not have participated. The motion was carried by one vote. Is this legally carried motion?
Thank you. Finally, I think there was somebody over on the far right who wished to speak. Again, if you can go to the microphone, introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Good evening. I'm Susan Peck from Sackville Ward. I'd like to ask if the council can explain why it is being asked to take on long-term legal, financial and operational liability for the fountains when the neighbourhood board has access to £20 million budget specifically intended for regeneration improvement of Bexhill? What safeguards are in place to ensure that this funding is used for tangible public benefit rather than being diverted into transfers of risk, administration processes or ongoing consultation costs that effectively shift financial burden onto the town council and local taxpayers?
Okay, thank you. Just want to clarify, is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak? That's looking like a no. Thank you very much for those questions. The answers will, as always, be provided in a minute. So I'll move on to item two of the agenda, which is apologies for absence. Do we have the apologies for tonight?
Yes, we have three. Councillor Lee is unwell, councillor Peters is also unwell and councillor Rustam has another commitment.
Okay, thank you. I believe councillor Lee is currently in hospital, so I think it's, we've done it before, I think we should express good wishes to him and I hope he gets well soon and returns to usual life. So I pause to take that on. Item three to receive... Yes. We need to propose and a second, the apologies that have been suggested. All those in favour? Any against? Any abstentions? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. To receive declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interest, do we have any of those? Councillor Drayson?
Member of Rother District Council.
Thank you. Councillor Winter?
Member of Rother District Council.
Councillor Byrne?
Member of Rother District Council.
Councillor Timby?
Member of Rother District Council and director of Old Town Occasions.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm moving on to item four. I just have one thing to say, if I may. I've said it before. Please can I ask councillors to be very succinct? We have a lot of business, particularly in the closed part of this session. We need to move through the agenda as smoothly, quickly as we possibly can tonight. That isn't me stopping anyone's speak, but please, if somebody else has expressed that opinion already, then the time when we vote on it is where you can also express your thought process. So we need to move this quite quickly. So item five is to approve the minutes of the meeting of 29th of October, as in appendix A.
I want to make on the minutes before they're approved.
Yep.
Referring to item 002516E, motions from councillors...
002516E, yeah.
Motions from councillors. The information given within the contents of the motion is incorrect.
Okay.
Specifically referring to the phrase priority being given to Little Common Primary School and Burkdale Nursery. During the conversation we had, when we discussed the crossing, it was Little Common Primary School, two crossings is associated with it, one on Little Common Road and one on Burkdale, the road.
Okay.
Burkdale Nursery is in fact in London Road, in central London, in central Bexhill.
So the word nursery needs removing?
Yes, I should think that would be... If I may, can I please refer to the original motion proposer, councillor Winter?
Yep.
Who may be able to confirm whether to say that.
Councillor Winter?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, no, I've already discussed it with the town clerk and councillor Plim. So yeah, it's just the word nursery that needs to be taken out.
So what we'll do with that then? That's a proposal from councillor Plim and a seconder from councillor Winter. All those in favour of approving that? Okay, thank you. What we'll do, we'll defer the signing of it for amended minutes to be made and we'll bring the amended minutes to the next full council meeting. Does that accept all? Okay. Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Good. Item six is recommendations from committees. So six A is to receive and approve updated grants and donations policy. You've received that councillors in appendix B. It's fair to say that this isn't the first time we've amended it. It's also fair to say that the finance committee went through this at length and we think we've nailed it. I don't know whether the chair of finance or vice-chair of finance would like to add any comments. I see it as a proposer and a seconder and vote on it because this has been debated significantly in the finance team. Did you want to add anything to that?
No, I agree.
Vice-chair, would you like to add any to that?
I thought it all went very well, so that's just my opinion.
Okay. Any comments? Councillor Drayson?
One little one, that's all. Because yes, a new year, a new grants policy. But it's the fixing or the designation of 24 for events and 18 for other projects. I hope there's going to be some flexibility. There's a danger in putting ourselves in that silo that when you've spent all the events money and all the other stuff's there. But just allocate it would have been a little, but designate sounds final. So I just hope there's some flexibility in it.
I think that would depend upon who's on finance, but I would have thought that was quite reasonable. We may not have enough to spend on events and therefore we wouldn't want to not distribute funds, I would suggest. But that would be down to the committee, but your observation's noted. So councillor Ross?
Just a minor typo. We did it right when we started it off. 3.1 I think should read application as well as...
Yeah, okay. With that exception, it's a proposer and a seconder and so do we have a proposer for this to go through, please? Looking for chair or vice-chair. Are you proposing? Do we have a seconder? There's two seconders over there. All those in favour of these amendments to the grants policy show. Any against? Any abstentions? That's carried. Thank you. Budget predictions, item seven. So I just want to be very clear. What would normally happen at this stage of the year is either the chair or the vice-chair of finance would present this to full council. This year is a little bit different. We're not able to agree the precept tonight because it's dependent upon other discussions that will happen in closed session. So this is, what is presented in front of full council has been through, so that's why I'm not going to, it would have been councillor Blavrove who chaired the last full finance meeting. This is informational with a four-page document that's been very well prepared by our RFO explaining everything. So I would suggest we don't need to debate this tonight. What I would suggest is that if any councillors have any questions relating to the... This is A3 sheet, isn't it? The A3 sheet that's in front of you. Take the opportunity to email the RFO. She will then reply to all councillors with the answer to your questions so that then we can actually deal with the precept at the next full council meeting. That is within the time span that we have to get it to Rother District Council. That's my proposal. Councillor Crotty?
Thank you Chair. Do we have an email for the RFO?
Yes.
Or do you just all send it to the town clerk?
It's rfo@etc etc. Councillor Drayson?
Is that all saying for questions on the report, C1?
Yes. Are we all agreeable to that? Because we can't, as soon as we agree the precept now with these numbers, legally we're not able to add anything to it that we may wish to later on, may I say. Councillor Plim?
If you're proposing, then I'll second it.
Okay. I'm proposing that, seconder. All those in favour of that as a process? Any against? Carried unanimously. So in accordance with my request and desire to get the majority of the information done as soon as we possibly can, I have written a mayor's report. It is over a page and a half. I would normally read it so members of the public can see what myself and my deputy have been up to... Sorry, your mayor and your deputy have been up to in the last month or so. I'm not going to read it out because that would just take up three minutes, which isn't really necessary. Bar to say that the last month has been rather busy and I'm expecting the next month to be even busier. As proven today, this is my third meeting, hence why I'm wearing a suit. So I won't be reading it out. I will get it mailed out to you all tomorrow so you can see. Okay? Item nine, reports from councillors. Delighted to see we have a divisional county councillor here today. Would you like to introduce yourself and...
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Councillor Ian Hollage, Bexhill South, East Sussex County Council. Just wanted to give members here and members of the public an update about overwhelming number of consultations that are going out. We've just finished a formal consultation on the Rother Parking Review. It has gone through and will be looked at by officers in terms of the new restrictions. All the responses from the public and yourselves will be looked at and then come out, probably in January. And then any amendments will go to a planning committee. Can't tell you when because it depends on something I don't know about. I should imagine February, maybe March. If at that stage, there is any of your public, your constituents, residents, that want to make something at planning committee, I can help them go along there and make their case with them. So that's something that is process and we can sort that out. But I haven't had much negative response from the parking situation. Lot is changing there, but it's been pretty good, better than some. Most of the members here will be aware, especially Rother, of what they've put out with their local plan and the housing numbers. The housing numbers that the government have set us are ambitious and probably impossible. Even Rother has admitted that. And I would just like to encourage everybody to get engaged with that consultation. I know consultations are boring, but it is something that will affect Bexhill, I think, in the long term. There will be significant growth within Bexhill and therefore it's important of what we do here collectively to make better, Bexhill better for the new people that will likely to come this way. What I've got in front of me here is a meeting I've been to today regarding the devolution and local government reorganisation. That is happening at such a pace that you wouldn't believe it. And it's business as usual in terms of trying to set a budget for all the problems that all councils have got is difficult, let alone trying to reorganising a Sussex mayor with devolution. But we are very, very lucky in Sussex that we've got Mark Rogers who has set up three combined county authorities. We had this presentation from Jodie Townsend who set up six mayoral county authorities. And the structure that they're setting up is what's called a local assurance framework. The governance, the audit, the scrutiny committees, how that is done. So that was looked at by what I chaired, this 15 members. We all came up with questions, the report would be written. And it's not going to go public yet. There will be, we have to put forward a statutory instrument for the English Devolution and Communities Bill that is currently going through Parliament. So that is a process and that will be made public likely, can't say, in December and you will see how that process is evolving. We're all talking about local government reorganisation, but our focus at the moment is setting up the strategic mayoral authority and during 26 and into 27, we'll be looking at local government reorganisation properly, other than what we're doing at the moment, working out in our minds how it should work. Are there any questions that are relevant to East Sussex County Council? Or can I refer to the fountains of the neighbourhood board, which I see on the agenda later because I sit on the neighbourhood board, we discuss the fountains regularly and we can answer your question.
That will come up during debate.
I'll shut up about that. Right. Any questions about anything?
Questions for councillor Hollage? No, again, thank you for attending. Always nice that you're here.
Thank you.
9B, to receive reports from ward district councillors. So we've got four district councillors. Do you have anything to say from a district? Moving on to 9C, to receive ward reports from town councillors. Anybody wish to make a ward report? Councillor Crotty?
Thank you Chair. Last Friday, me and my fellow councillor Plim, when we reopened the challenge of toilets after they've been dramatically banished on the east. I've been contacted by a resident who's concerned that all the way up the front is locked, but the back, they can go through the back way and it's not locked up. And they're worried about kids going over the back there and coming through that way. So I don't know if the actual toilets are locked or not.
I think that's not a report, that's a question to ask the officers.
Well, that's a report as well, but that's that. Also...
Ask the officers.
Okay, and also Weston Road streetlights, I've looked into because there's five on the actual walls, high up, that have not been working for the last year or so. I actually contacted these highways and reported those lights not working. So hopefully Weston Road will be in brightness again. I've just had word today that Weston Road traders at the bottom end aren't happy that nothing is happening at the Christmas virtual event for them. I'm not too sure if the lines are doing anything for the bottom end, but at the moment I think the last stall they've got is going to be just past Wetherspoons. So a lot of businesses at the bottom end are not happy about it.
Again, I would suggest most of those could be dealt with direct to officers. That's, the report is a report of what's going on in...
That is what's going on in my ward, thank you.
Okay. I might have suggested you missed an opportunity to answer, to ask councillor Hollage to help you with the lighting and stuff.
That's going that way. Okay, that way, thank you.
All right, okay. Anyone else wish to say anything? Just trying to help to steer things.
Yeah, speeding along, like you said.
Okay, moving on to item 10, to receive an update on the neighbourhood plan. I don't know whether the chair of the neighbourhood plan committee, that's a group, working group...
Whatever you want to call it, yeah.
What I would say is, I was at a all-day conference at the AMEX a couple of weeks ago organised by East, South and West Salk. Doesn't sound right saying W-Salk. And the guru on planning, can't remember his name now, did suggest that we should investigate the usefulness of creating a neighbourhood plan right now. There is money in our proposed precept and I think that it's a lot of money. I thought there was going to be significant benefit, but he has put doubts in my mind and I would be wrong to go along with spending a lot of money without clarification from our officers whether what the feasibility is and whether there is a real requirement for a neighbourhood plan with all the changes in local government. Why would we want to spend £20,000 a year creating something if there is no benefit? And I'm only flagging it, it needs a motion which it could come through this to say, please can we clarify the benefit of a neighbourhood plan? So I think we should do and I'm prepared to put a motion forward for our clerk to clarify with the relevant people, which would probably be Steve Tilbury, who was East Salk's planning guru. Because I may have misunderstood and I wouldn't want to lead this council down a route of spending money on something that may not be of any benefit. We have time in our hands to be able to clarify that. So, and that's before we start really pushing on. We've got to a point where we're going to go to the next phase of it and I think we should just be a little bit wary. Councillor Plim?
All due respect Chair, I think the working group have been discussing this.
Yep.
And I believe the clerk is aware that we have concerns regarding that and I'm sure the officers will be doing that work and will notify us if there's anything untoward about carrying on with it.
I'll just clarify, do you even have to do something?
Yes, so the work that I was asked to carry out was to ask for RDC to appoint an advisor on the neighbourhood plan. I was also asked to look into the budget to appoint a consultancy and unfortunately I'm still awaiting those costs. And I was also asked to submit an application for the whole of Bexhill-on-C to be included within the boundary of the neighbourhood plan. So those investigations are ongoing, but currently, obviously I can't investigate whether or not we should do one without a motion because the work that I've been asked to do is very much doing a neighbourhood plan. So a bit of steer from the council, which direction you'd like me to go in would be really helpful.
I really do think we should clarify and I would be remiss if I don't bring it to this council, something I've heard at a conference from a planning guru. I think we should clarify personally, but if the council want to go ahead, then we'll go ahead. Councillor Ross?
I tend to agree because I'd heard that under the devolution, part of the government thing is neighbourhood plans won't actually be recognised any longer. I don't know if councillor Hollage might be able to throw the light on the guru here?
I'll go to councillor Jack in next round.
I was going to second your motion so that we could discuss it.
Okay. I've got a second that we can discuss it.
So then...
Sorry, I was just going to say what councillor Ross said. Sorry.
Am I right that a neighbourhood plan is needed in order for a council to get SIL money? And that was the historic logic for doing it?
Yes, you are right. We get more, we get extra SIL money, we have a neighbourhood plan. Yeah. Councillor Same?
So it was mentioned by Trevor Lego that that may be the case, that there won't be any SIL money as well. It has been mentioned again that that may not be relevant.
So I think we should ask the officers to investigate the real understanding of it because there's bits and pieces that I'm picking up. And if we go and commit, when we do the precept stuff, put money in there and start it and then it's a waste of money and time. I'm sure the councillors and the working group have got other things they can help the council with. So councillor Drayson?
I would support that and I was just going to mention with my other hat on as Rother and chair of the planning committee, we had a case recently where in fact a neighbourhood plan, although it's written to cover 10 years, is considered by the government to be out of date after five years. So again, we might only be doing all this work for five years and who knows what's going to happen in the next five years? Because I think lots of places don't look SIL properly and the government could well do something with SIL. So I would say let's investigate it.
So there's a proposal from me, there's a seconder that we're asking our officers to investigate whether there is a real need for us to still have a neighbourhood plan. Anybody else wish to speak? Otherwise I should go to the vote. Councillor Timby?
So the budget portion would then be...
That wouldn't be needed.
It would be needed, but you'll put it into maybe reserves just in case?
Possibly.
Okay.
So all those in favour of those motions, please show. Carried unanimously. Okay, thank you. 12B. Do you want to talk about this or do you want me to talk about this? Oh. Oh, wrong place. Sorry everybody. And breathe. On to item 11. Rother District Council liaison to receive update following leaders' meeting. I've made some notes. Normally our clerk would send out some comments, but I think I'll just briefly explain. There were seven subject headings and I'll briefly give you an overview because of time etc. We explained again the work of the town wardens and the scope within their work and there were lots of smiley faces around. From Rother's point of view, they're really, they're quite happy, obviously, because we're smartening everything up. Comments were made about some of the work that had been done, which was really good. The second subject was progress on Ravenside Roundabout and that is in hand. Yes, it's been going for a long time. We did however confirm that there aren't any funds planned in our precept that is on the table at the moment and there's some more work to be done with highways through the specification and it's backwards and forwards through emails, so that was explained. There was discussion about the potential of yellow bus entering Sidley, which councillor Carroll was in conversations with the Sidley, the community bus people to see whether that's an option. Again, it incorporates greater community engagement between Sidley and the town and vice versa. Again, it incorporates greater community engagement between Sidley and the town and vice versa. We talked about the extra area marine gardens, which we've already talked about at full council. So that was noted in hand. We talked about, as always, toilets. And we explained about a discussion that was held at the amenities committee meeting about investigating the potential of managing the toilets slightly differently. Because as you all know here, you've seen on social medias, those that are on social media, damage that has been done that we've now rectified. The officers presented a paper to the amenities committee about potentially looking after them differently. I.e., I think the phrase I used was pay to pee or having attendance there etcetera, etcetera. So that's some ongoing work. And yes, it creates a little bit of humour because that has been ongoing for a long time. But if we are, as a town council, spending money to look after these facilities, it's only right and proper that we look at all options. So that was talked about. We then talked a fair amount of length about devolution of assets. And most of that will come up later on. And we talked about lots of things with regard to that. What we could do, what we couldn't do, blah, blah, blah. It was just a general chit chat around that. The final agenda item was about future joint communication events and it was agreed at the moment, there's no need to do that. And that was pretty much it. It was a strange meeting because it was online unfortunately. I don't think you really have the same interaction as face to face, but it had to be done online. So that was an overview of the leaders meeting. If anyone's got any questions from what I've fed back to, happy to try and answer. No questions forthcoming, good. So eleven B is to approve draft heads of terms for Channel, Channel View East Public Conveniences. That is appendix D. Try the right one. Councillor Goss.
First thing, I wonder if there's been any response to the comments that were made previously. This doesn't look an awful lot different. I've got a few comments on it. Basically, they are making us responsible for repair, cleaning etcetera of the pathways either side. Those are accessible to anybody. One of the pathways is used for storage by, by, oh, sorry, by one of the COVID tenants. It's sort of the road up or something. I don't think that part of it should really come under us. We did make this point before, what I did. The, the toilets, yes, and the, the windows doors, okay. But the rest of it, the enclosed paths, that should be dealt with. Under ensuring obligations, it just says tenant insurers. We can't insure the building because it's part of a much bigger building. So presumably they're carrying building insurance and we're just insuring the interns. Which is down part of it. And on the asbestos register, it still says to follow, which it said before. That was eighteen months ago when we last looked at it.
Okay, I believe the details are still with our solicitors, the lease and that information that was fed back before. Sure, our clerk is noting the comments for feeding back to.
The red line they give on the plan is finance, the internal, the toilets. They've added bits on it.
I, I think it's fair to say that we can insure it because it's a red line and it would just be added to our.
Yeah, we can't insure the building as such because it is a much bigger building.
I, I would guess.
We can do contents or whatever, maybe insure the interns, but that's all.
We'd leave that probably to our RFO to deal with that under the insurance. Okay, any other comments? Do we need a couple of seconds to pass this or can we pass all those observations?
Previously, we have agreed things pending questions. But it's the committee's call, obviously. If the committee doesn't feel confident making a decision while there are still questions pending, then you can defer it awaiting further comments.
Is it the wish to defer this or to pass it?
Councillor Drayson.
Sorry councillor Drayson.
I would say defer it because it's just something that councillor Goss touched on. The date on the top of this form is June twenty twenty four. And now it's our solicitors that are sitting with it. You know.
That, that was the date it was asked issue.
Yeah, so we, we can afford to defer it to get it right because I, I think those paths are quite important.
Okay. We'll defer it and feed the information. Does anybody else have any other comments? So we capture it all because I'm really conscious of what could be coming down the track and all the paperwork is gonna get clogged up with solicitors, backwards and forwards between councils. We could end up, or it might still be here in four years' time, discussing a lease that we're managing and maintaining. Councillor Cling.
Thing is, we have to set a precedence, we can't accept leases that are not correct. And so if we set that precedence now.
I'm just gonna.
If we accept that precedence now, that we accept a lease that's not correct, then we're gonna probably regret that in a couple of years' time. As all these other leases come down the line.
I'd just like. I'd just like clarity if I can from any other councils who have any other comments with regard to this. So we can get the answers and defer it and then come back. Any other questions? Okay, is it the wish of this council that it is deferred until we get the answers? Reading the room, it feels like councillor Carroll, sorry, you're agreeing. Does anyone disagree with deferring it? No, okay, we'll defer that to get some answers. Okay? So eleven C is to approve draft heads of terms for the villas, which is appendix E. A little bit smaller. I'm, I'm gonna turn my head to the right. Any issues on?
No, because it doesn't really say a lot. They sort of have a tick boxes where they should do or whatever, but it's all down to landlord anyway. My only real comment on it was there's no plan attached from which it refers to.
Fair point. Do we need a plan?
It should be. Yeah.
Our clerk's just going to see whether we have a plan. Councillor Drayson.
I may be being stupid here, I may have missed something and I know it's a very wide heads term. But how many offices? It just says offices. What are you thinking about? Does it not to be decided in the future?
I'm unsure, I haven't been there, but our clerk has been there. How many offices are there?
Sorry, so are we talking about we're taking a villa or some offices in one?
Offices in the villa, yeah.
The number to be decided.
Is it seven or eight offices of offices and other rooms?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna chase up the plan because you should see a plan.
Okay. Councillor Beare.
I would like to say that considering RDC are the landlord, that they have in the past stated officially that the villas could not be used by RDC staff. And in fact, that was part of their argument for the redevelopment of the town hall site. It bothers me, it bothers me altogether that we are currently in the hub in Weston Road. The break clause to leave there is in twenty twenty seven. And it looks like this is, this is going to happen. I feel that as one of the employers, if you like, in this council, we are the employers obviously. But I haven't looked at it, I couldn't even tell you which building it is. When we were going to take the one incident off of St Leonard's Road, in St Leonard's Road, sorry, which was a long time ago, all of the council went there and viewed it, well, as many as wanted to go went and viewed it. And in fact, you know, it was terrible, it was dreadful. And I was the last one to go and everyone told me that it was great. And in fact, I went there and took photographs and it was an abomination. And, you know, I had to make a real noise about that. And I just feel that we, we should, I shouldn't be sitting here as a councillor saying, I don't know what building that is, I've never seen it, I don't know anything about it. And what I do know about it is it is inaccessible. We've got a disabled councillor that couldn't get in there. And we can't, it's not big enough to hold full council in there. And we are going to land up keeping the one we've got until twenty twenty seven, which we are paying twenty four thousand pounds a year for. And we are then going to put this, this figure up to fifty one thousand nine hundred and sixteen because we're going to pay thirty three thousand for the villas. And this is, you know, we're going to split the staff or get more staff, which I'm not sure that's a great idea at this moment in time. And, you know, what, what are we doing? Why are we doing that? If we, we're, we're out looking around for this building far too early. And apart from all of that, I've been in this council since it started and it was mooted many years ago that we should look for a building. I said no to that because it was too early in the day, far too early in the day to go around splashing out money. We've been here nearly five years now and I would like to see us look and we've got time to look for a premises to buy, rather than take on this premises in the town hall square. And that is all I've got to say about it at this point, but I am really, really worried about that. Thank you.
So the agenda item says to approve draft heads of terms for the villas. Listening to what you've said, turning that into potentially a motion on, there's a lot that you've put in there. Let's go around the table. Councillor Cotty.
Taking up a role as a town councillor, it's always been a known principle. It's essential that Bexhill Town Council seems to provide value for money for residents. Now, in twenty twenty three, our old town clerk had stated that only use of the building, the hub that we've got now, that only use further the building. Now, obviously, you've got two floors upstairs. It's two floors that can be, that can be used. Or the fact is that this villa is, again, it's a piece of, well, not even four pages really, that has absolutely no information. It's only guaranteed for three years. So that means that we could be out there in three years. The, we can do like you suggested before by looking at borrowing funds for capital expenditures, then we've got an asset to use for ourselves and it's our building. We also agreed that on the first F and G meeting in two thousand and twenty six, we would look for a new building as we had a, a six month break, we've got a break clause in twenty twenty seven. And I believe that this is a waste of money, tax money, and I think we should either look at a building that's ours in a future setting.
Okay, councillor Jack.
I think I've managed to figure out where it is, but as councillor Goss pointed out, we don't actually know what it is without a floor plan. So I can't approve whatever it is. When you get the floor plan, could you also clarify whether there's a big building of which we might have half, two thirds or whatever, and whether there's flexibility, i.e. what discretionary choice we have.
Okay, come here, councillor Thomas.
Yes, I'm not against it, but we, we looked at a building in Weston Road. We cleared it down. We were asked to approve this and we hadn't been inside it.
Mm-hmm, yep. Okay, councillor Goss.
Yeah, I tend to agree on a few points. I didn't realise, having been away, that nobody had looked at it and seen what was there. Particularly if he doesn't meet DDA for access, then it's not very good. Every building should do that these days. So that needs to be clarified, I think. But yeah, other than that, the other thing I guess is maybe before taking it up or taking it further, talk to our existing landlord about any particular costs of breaking the lease. So that we know where we stand.
Councillor Same.
So yeah, I mean, I agree with most of what councillors are saying, but all I'd like to say is we have looked at buildings. The comments we've had is they're too big, they're too much money, cost too much to fix them. And that is what you are gonna have if we go out and look at a building. Okay, you're not, there's councillors here that think you're gonna go out and get a building for two hundred thousand pounds, put some offices in there and it's done. That's not how it works. It's going to cost a lot of money if you want a building. And those councillors that have spoken are the ones that said it was too much money, it needed repairing, it's too big, it's this, it's that. So we've gone for the villas, I'm not saying they're perfect. We've been told they may have accessibility problems, which is fine, but they can be checked. I don't know if that's true or not. But as I said, if this is what the councillors want and they want to buy a building, you have to accept that it's going to be a lot of money. And there will be buildings out there that need a lot of repairs, a lot of changes for what we need it for.
Councillor Drayson.
Just briefly, so the originally the staff were moved out of there because those villas were gonna be knocked down as part of the town hall redevelopment. That didn't get planning permission as since we were withdrawn, it wouldn't be viable anyway. So Rother have recently done up both those buildings. Redecorate, I think they've even new windows in some of them. I think the connection still exists to the town hall. And I'm just thinking ahead and I know councillor Cling so desperately wanted this to be in the council chamber. Perhaps when Rother have gone, that is an opportunity. So I wouldn't discount the villas, but at the moment, there's not enough information at all.
Councillor Winter.
Yes, thank you Chair. I won't go into the heads of terms because they're, it's not even worth the paper it's written on. But for the purposes of transparency, my biggest issue, apart from the heads of terms, is actually we've, we've been continuously told recently that this council was ill informed when it comes to the break clause. We thought it was twenty six, it's actually twenty twenty seven. My biggest concern is who was the company or the individual who provided this incorrect information and has now cost the taxpayer sixteen thousand pound in additional rent for an additional year? Because we believed it was twenty six, it's actually twenty seven, so that's another year's worth of rent, which is at sixteen thousand pounds. So whoever that individual company was, has cost the taxpayer an additional sixteen thousand pound and they need to be held accountable.
I, I think, I understand where you're coming from and I haven't got the answers because I wasn't on the council at that time, you were. So you're not part of that. I know, I know, and it's very easy to look at what's happened, but it's happened. I believed it was early twenty twenty six when we went through the finance committee, but it's not, it's twenty twenty seven. So that is where it is, we can't change that, but there may be some discussions that could be our. I'm still going around this way, councillor Burn, I'll come back.
Well, could I ask that question to the clerk and then perhaps we could have that at a future meeting or she can come back to me directly? Or I don't want to just go out into the abyss, it's sixteen thousand pound that the taxpayers now are gonna have to fund for an extra year when they, if we advised properly, they wouldn't have had to.
But they might not have to, it depends what we do.
Well, we know that we've got to stay in, because you can't break a break clause early unless you, you've still got to pay for that up until that break clause regardless. You're still responsible for that building and the commercial lease.
But it does depend on what we do. So you can't investigate something that might have gone wrong if you're not going to go anywhere else until twenty twenty seven.
I have an answer, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sensing that there isn't a lot of point in carrying on debating this heads of terms document. Is that the feel? Councillor Burn.
One thing I would, would say, the last time we, we talked about this, that was very, we're looking at operational matters here. And the clerk set out very clearly why he felt you had to, our staff had to move. Not only the existing staff we had, we're going to grow the authority. Also, I think there's a degree of maybe future proofing in the fact that we would be co residing with the, the rump, as it were, of Rother District Council. I think that's got a lot going for it. So I, first, first and foremost, I think we should rely on our clerk's assessment of the unsuitability of our current premises. And against that, yes, we are now looking at somewhere else as an operational matter. The heads of terms, as Colin Winter, as councillor Winter put out, put out is, is maybe not as specific as we need to make that decision. But I think moving, I'm, I'm certainly all for moving. Uh, but I think the operational matters, the operational condition of the accommodation, its suitability should be done to our clerk. We should maybe be looking at the heads of terms of any agreement that comes forward.
Councillor Cross.
Um, just one thing, I'm realising where this is now and what it is. Um, the, the three-year, uh, lease is rather short. Uh, bearing in mind what might happen to RDC, it'd be very nice to be with RDC, I'm sure, but RDC might not be there in two years' time. If the new authority decides they want the whole building, the town hall and the rest of it, um, we, we could be out looking again in two years' time.
That's why it's a maximum three years, because nobody knows past that. So you're absolutely right. We could kidstool out for us, pay moving costs there and in three years' time, it'd not be suitable for us.
If they, if they gave us a longer lease, then the new authority will be that family.
They, and that's why they, they won't give us longer than three years, in this instance. Councillor Cowell.
Chair, I, I think, uh, uh, well, we're not looking further afield. We're looking in Bexhill all the time, town centre.
Yeah.
There is places being built on the upside of, uh, Bexhill, around Sydney, around Pecheon. So we can find something if we look a little bit harder. For me personally, I don't know why we'd be renting for, for three years. I, I, I would rather see us start to put some solid foundation down, start owning some buildings, start getting a bit higher in council. Because I think rent, renting, you know, keep renting, we're not showing any confidence in ourselves.
Fair point, absolutely. Councillor Pym.
Yeah, I think it's a shame that yet again, we haven't got s- significant information that we need to make an important financial decision. Um, a, a, a plan would be nice to ascertain actually what we're going to be renting within those buildings, whether it, there's two villas there, they're interconnected and both of them are connected to the town hall. Um, do we have access through to the town hall? Or are we got access up the stairs? Um, are we in one part of the villa or are we in the two villas? We don't know. And so for that reason, it's very sad to do this, but for that reason, I would say we have to go back.
Okay.
I take the point that three years and I think, yep, we know there's so much happening in the next uh, three or four years within Bexhill, within the, the local authorities themselves. And that's not really a surprise, it's three years. If there is a, a way of extending that to a five-year or a ten-year even, just to, to give us a little bit more security there, so we can build on the, the area we've got there, I would like that nego- looked into. Um, but at the time being, I don't think we could, uh, ignore this at all.
Okay.
Really, we don't know what we're looking at.
Okay. All right. Councillor Vagave.
Thank you. I would just like to add to what I said earlier and be quite clear that I do not object to the council looking for another premises. We're growing and, and it's inevitable. I object to doing it now, which will cause us to pay or the residents of this town to pay two lots of rent until twenty twenty seven. That doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And just to say that I want to see this go right because last time it didn't. The clerk had very much to do with the fact that we wanted the one in Western Road. We went in there, we were all shown it, whoever wanted to see it, we were shown three floors. It was as clean as a whistle, it was freshly decorated, it, it was nice. There was nothing really to moan. I had a good look at it, I, I thought, oh, this is good. And a year later, at council, I posed the question of, sorry, why aren't we using the first floor? Uh, because at that time, the clerk said it's very crowded down here, you know, we've got all these staff crammed in. And I said, but why aren't we using the first floor? Oh, it's inaccessible. And as a matter of fact, the clerk knew that beforehand, it's just no one else had asked that question. And I don't want that to happen again. We need to know, we're using other people's money to do this. We need to know exactly, someone else said it earlier, what it is we are getting into. And we want it to go right, and this is why I'm very vocal on this point. And I still ask this question, why aren't some of the staff that are still crammed into the ground floor on the first floor?
Okay.
Why not?
Councillor Jacklin, I'll come back to you. Go on.
I think we, we need to differentiate between the piece of paper, the terms and the building to which it relates. It feels as if, if the building is right, then the piece of paper will get sorted. We just need a little bit more information about the building. I'm not at all worried about writing off sixteen or twenty thousand pounds, given that we've got four hundred thousand pounds of staff costs. And if the staff feels that the current premises are inadequate and the new ones are better, um, that will pay for itself.
Councillor Winter.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, two points, obviously, we're not, I can sense we're not going to agree this tonight. So when it does come back to, uh, full council, please, it does stay in the, um, abysmal heads of terms that the EPC is attached, but knowing Rotherham's track record with EPCs, I would like to see that moving forward at the next time this comes forward. And also before agreeing any commercial lease, uh, especially because the villas have just had extensive, um, decorative works done. I'd like to see a schedule of conditions before agreeing to any lease. Come back as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, Councillor Thomas. Then I'm going to summarise and move on. We'll be here all night, otherwise. Councillor Thomas.
Yes, I see this as for three years. Um, we are in this, um, essence going to be replacing Rother District Council, who has the freehold of the town hall and the villas. I feel we should be aiming to have a freehold. Um, I know we're not going to be, um, not going to get the town hall back, because it used to be Bexhill Town. But we should be aiming not just for three years, but for a freehold.
Okay. Um, I, I think I need to summarise and move on.
Yeah, I was just going to propose that we defer this to the next meeting.
I think there's a little bit more we've got to, I want to summarise before that. Um, so I'm hearing lots of things, I haven't said anything yet, but it does disappoint me because I put two motions to previously about golden purchasing somewhere and it was dismissed. Um, as we're not going to do that. Now people who have dismissed that now want to buy a building. We've got to get our strategy right as a town councillor as to where we're going, which is why I've been trying to get a strategy together. We don't have one. We have a corporate obligation for the employees of Bexhill Town Council for their health and wellbeing. And I can assure you, the way it is with the amount of people in the hub, it is not a particularly pleasant working environment. There is not enough room. There is a rotor for employees to work from home, which is very difficult when they're interreacting with each other. It's then done by email and you lose sight of stuff within an email. So we have to go somewhere. This was an option. Some of the numbers that are quoted in the option are worst case scenario, as an example, we don't have to keep. If people decided to go to the villas with more information and a different heads of terms, we don't have to keep both open. We just, um, and if the landlord then relents it, we wouldn't have a year's worth of rent. We're also getting free utilities in. So when you add up the utility bill that there is at the hub, if we shut the hub and move to the villas, it would be cost neutral. So we wouldn't be costing taxpayers a lot of money and people can nod their heads, but that is fact. We won't be paying for the utility bills at the villas. It's not perfect. No building in Bexhill is perfect. Everybody by now should be aware of what's going to be coming down the tracks at us. And we have to position it that we're ready to receive that train. And we can't, we're not allowed to use the first floor in the hub.
What?
We're not allowed to. There is only one exit route. And if you were working on there and there was a fire downstairs, that employee would be at risk. That is fact.
Could I just say, sorry?
No, I'm summarising. When we took that building on, nobody had any inclination of what the town council was going to look like. And it has grown exponentially since then. We've got a vision sought of, of what's coming our way. And it will not survive with the people that are in there. And we have to listen to what the officers are saying and we have to look after our officers for their health and wellbeing. So we've got to do something. I've heard what most people have said about the terms, the heads of terms. So we can revert that back and bring it back with more information at the next council meeting. So as Councillor Pym said, I think it's right to defer it. But I don't want to have the same conversation about buying, renting, going somewhere else in a month's time, because that will be another month gone when there's all these things happening and we cannot survive in the hub. No argument over that, you can't. It is not a working environment for the quantity of people. So I'm not going to allow any more debate because I think everybody has had at least one occurrence. I've given everyone the time to raise their hands. We've got a proposal to defer this for more information, but I just ask all councillors to be very clear of what they want the council to do. Do we buy or do we rent?
Can I just say a couple of words here? You know better than us, but you don't tell us that, that clarification. What I'm saying is this, you're saying about how they're cramped in the office, but they can't use upstairs, there's two floors upstairs. Why the hell we've got a building that we can't even use properly?
So.
So why don't we look and buy something that is beneficial to the public, that's an asset for us, and it's also an asset for the public as well?
You don't have to tell me that, Councillor Cotty. I've tried that twice and no one has supported it.
We're here till twenty twenty seven, so we've got plenty of time to make a place.
We, we haven't got till twenty twenty seven. It is an unpleasant and unworkable environment in the hub.
Well, sorry, but you know.
How, how can I explain that any differently? It is unfair on our staff to work in that environment. So I need a second to defer this. And I just ask you all to come back. We've got lots of seconders to defer this.
Chair, as part of the deferable, is it possible to organise a visit for those councillors who want to look at the offices?
I've already asked.
Yes. So sometime between now and next full council, there will be an opportunity to everyone to go there. If people feel that seriously about making a one-off decision about whether we rent or buy, there's a policy and a process to do that. It's called putting a motion on the agenda. Simple as that. But we can't keep going round and round and round. Everybody has to understand whether you've known about it or not, it is not working for staff there working from home and in that environment.
Just to be fair, Chair, sorry to interrupt, but we've learned more in your summarised organisation than we have learned about the whole thing. In that last minute there, you told us more information. I'll be getting the information after we've spoken. You're, you're actually learning from the states.
Yeah.
So if, if we've actually been told there are going to be mobility issues getting into the villas and we're getting mobility issues in the property we've got now, we're not learning by our own state.
No, no. Fair point.
May I please add one thing?
Sorry.
It's not a long thing.
Okay.
I just want to say that we didn't know very much last time we went looking for a building and we were, and I'll use this word because I believe it, we were tricked into taking a building that we could not use. And it's evident that we couldn't use it. We couldn't use it. We, it was inaccessible. It was, it was inaccessible from day one and it remains so, and that's why we're here.
You cannot say things like that as a councillor. You're not allowed to because you'd be legally liable as a town councillor if we were sued. So please, can you withdraw that statement? You can't say that. You were not tricked.
If it pleases you, I will withdraw it. But, but what I'm trying to say is, we, we didn't know better and we were led to believe that.
I'm going to cease this conversation now, um, nearly. Because Councillor, to be fair to Councillor, he hasn't said anything. Some people have said three or four times.
A lot of people have summarised my thoughts as well, as I didn't find the need to say anything, but I do want to ask a question. You're right, Chair, we do need to have a vision of the strategy that we, that we continue to develop. Would it be a good idea to maybe make our minds up today whether we want to buy or rent? Or would that be a good idea to defer to the next meeting as well? But like you say, you do lose months on that. Do we need to work out strategy tonight on what path we're going to be taking?
That's quite a good conversation, which should probably be deferred.
I, I think on advice, that's probably quite a major conversation. Um, as I've said openly, I put four motions to potentially purchase two buildings, which there hasn't been enough interest. We are in a different place now, so I think that probably needs a separate discussion somewhere.
Do you mind if I clarify why?
I, I'll ask the clerk to clarify why.
So the reason I would suggest deferring that discussion is so that it can be put as an item on the agenda. So if members of the public feel that they want to comment on this, they can see it on the agenda and they can come and they can give the council their thoughts. If you make a decision based on something that isn't on the agenda, members of the public aren't informed on it and they need to have the right to come and speak their views.
I would like to urge my fellow councillors though to think about this until the next meeting. And maybe when we do put it up to motion, to have in their mind what they want to do and how they want to do it and work out a strategy. I'd like everyone to be prepared to that meeting.
And look around your wards. As Councillor Cowell says, there's two buildings in City that would be available. We don't have to be in the central area of Bexhill. We are Bexhill-on-Sea Town Council. So look in all your wards, look at all the empty buildings, come with some suggestions. We cannot just sit round this table and say, we don't like that, we don't like that, we've got to solve it and make the right decision. So.
Just for certain, the majority of companies places rent and space for offices.
Yeah.
Um, there's nothing wrong with, it's more getting the right building
Yeah.
and the right place than it is rent or buy.
So let's all go away and use our eyes in our wards and see what there is out there and come back. May I please move on as we've rejected those draft heads of terms and moved on to a different discussion which isn't on the agenda?
While we're on the subject of leases, I did want to ask just whereabouts we are with the Pecheon play bar, that is not on the agenda tonight.
Um, can we update?
Usually isn't it?
It, it's not. We'll update your answers. Okay. I'm just going to breathe for a minute. Um, item twelve, external representatives. Um, you'll see a slight change. We're not listing them all because otherwise I have to go through and read them all. Any external representatives wish to speak? No? Okay. Um, twelve B, um, do you want to speak on this or do you want me to speak on this?
What, I guess what the agenda states, sort of what I've got to go off, so if you've got anything to add.
I, I think I would like to add a couple of things and again, declaring an non-procurnary interest, I am on the neighbourhood board. Um, yes, the neighbourhood board do have a lot of money, but the neighbourhood board won't be here forever and a day. And that money will be spent, that possibly won't be, they might evolve into something else. But the money will be spent on Bexhill for the regeneration of Bexhill itself, for the betterment of Bexhill. Um, it's probably the worst kept secret that the number one thing that they want to try and do is to fix, um, the fountain stroke water feature and there's some work going on with that. Um, nothing can be confirmed until it goes to government, which is in my neighbourhood board report, but I will verbalise it. The report goes to government on, it's got to be there by Friday this week, MHCL. It's already got delegated authority to, at Rother as a statutory body, to the section one five one officer. I'm looking, I think that's right. Might be the one oh five, I think it's a one five one. Um, so that's all going to be agreed. Government won't come back to us until probably the end of February. I think it's three months, two, three months. So we don't know whether it's going to be possible. But before the neighbourhood board go, um, running down the track and potentially through the working group, get people involved, spend money, see whether it's possible, we have to think longer term, who's going to manage and pay for any maintenance project. And the sort of principle is, as you know, I've explained it all before, there's capital money they've got and revenue money. And the revenue is a quarter of what the capital is. So they don't have a great deal of revenue. They have some to support varying things and that, some of this could be supported, but long term, someone's got to manage that area. And that means if it happens, it's a small word, but it's a big if. If it does happen, which I'm sure lots of residents in Bexhill would like that there for the children, grandchildren, et cetera, someone's got to take responsibility for that area to maintain it. And that means managing the contract with whoever the maintenance is and be responsible for, if necessary, in an emergency, turning the water off, et cetera, et cetera. I'm expecting someone to say how much? No idea. We don't know that. This is just an agreement in principle. So do we want to have first dibs as a town council to have an agreement in principle to look after the management and the maintenance of the new water feature, however that evolves? And it's not going to be in next year's pre- And it's not going to be in next year's precept because the capital money from the MHCLG, neighbourhood board, won't hit the bank account until at least 1st of April 2027. So it's not a precept issue, but we do have to get an agreement. Do we want to have first dibs? There are other options. When it's there, the unitary could take it. There could be a local CIC that we could then fund and they could do it. Somebody could set up an organisation to do it. There's lots of other options, but we're there first. We've got the opportunity to look after it. Do we want to do that? Councillor Crotty.
Thank you, Chair. It says a new water feature. Does that mean that the, as they call it, the fountains? Is that, is that going to be the same thing or is it going completely different?
So we honestly don't know. The fountains aren't actually fountains. They're what are technically called a splash pad. And if you called it a splash pad, that wouldn't be very pleasing to attract people and people to come into the town. So whether you call it the fountains or a water feature, it's the same thing. That's to be defined as we work through that process. Does that help? How can I help you further?
No, well, I'm saying, you know, are we looking at a fountain or are we looking like?
We don't, we don't know. The design hasn't been created yet. We will get experienced people in to help us to create the design. Councillor Drayson.
I think the wording here is a bit confusing because it's considered confirming willing in principle to explore, taking on. In principle, I think the town council should be looking after it going forward.
Yeah.
But this was before I came to Bexhill, before I had anything to do with Rother. I understand that part of the problems with the existing ones was the contract that Rother allowed the people who fitted it to walk away
Correct.
and left us with a huge bill.
Correct.
So although in principle I say we could take it on, that's not committing to us.
No, it's not.
The neighbourhood board go and sign contracts with Mickey Mouse and partners, we don't want anything to do with it.
Correct. We're going to go this way. Councillor Tim.
Yeah, I totally agree with that, but in principle, I think everybody would like to sort of say, yes, we have the responsibility to do it there. But the facts are that we've got so many different things going on at the moment when it comes to local government. The plot of land it's on probably won't be considered to be given to us to maintain. It would probably be the unitary authority or even their pavilion estate, because I need to tidy up that. But if it's a unity authority, they are in a better position to liaise with the water authorities and do that, whereas we won't be. We're a parish council, so our little voice won't really come a duck's way. Far better for the unitary authority to take on this responsibility and liaise with the bigger water authorities and push the foot forward at a higher level than a small local level that we are. As much as I'd like us to maintain it, I do feel that strategically it's probably better for them to maintain it. The unitary authority could go forward with it.
Maybe I didn't expect, this is about hands-on, turning the water on and off if it needs to and dealing with a contractor with the maintenance. That, that's as much, as much it will go. Councillor Carroll.
I tend to agree with all of that, but the, I think the big thing is we have been missing the fountain for many years now and it's the children and the parents watching their kids play and, and people that use it. And it's, it's sort of lost, it needs to be fixed. I've got no concept of a sector opinion, but there is a massive problem with the land and who it belongs to.
Yeah.
But if it's a simple case of being in charge of maintenance and the outcome of it, I'm all for it, but again, I know that's a big question.
Just out of two pennies if I may, it is in our five-year plan that was created by the first administration of the town council and reviewed in year three, which was of this administration, and it said in there that we will fix the fountains. Well, someone's going to fix it for us and pay for it. Are we saying now then that we wouldn't have managed it and maintained it after we'd fixed it, which is in our five-year plan? Councillor Goss.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you. It will become a big setback because that's where the cost is going to go somewhere. The, the way this is written, yeah, we, we can in principle say yes, but it, it's all got to be very subject to what is done at the end of the day. It's got to be properly put in, it's got to maybe have a five-year maintenance contract and plan paid up. So that we're managing it, but you know, we know that if the thing falls apart, it's, it's all going to be properly repaired under a warranty.
Yeah. The, the, the good news is, I'm only there on the neighbourhood board as a resident, but we now do have our clerk on the neighbourhood board. So, but we, I, I want to try and round this up because this is only an agreement in principle and it's not an urgent thing, but the neighbourhood board don't want to progress down a route of exploring it without an agreement in principle. If we don't want to, that's fine. We'll let someone else do it. It's our choice. We've got first dibs. Councillor Jackin.
I think it feels as if we're being asked to answer the question, given that it's happening, are we okay with running it? From an environmental point of view, there are benign fountains, let's say fed by natural streams and other fountains which are a bit like leaving a tat on. Do we have any jurisdiction or influence over which kind of fountain it will be?
Yes, we don't. Because our clerk's on the board and on that working group. And when we go through the finding somebody to do it, and there was another thing that councillor Drayson has alluded to that didn't work particularly well with Rother, they had about five different people involved in it. And it's recognised you need one company and then they are responsible. So, but this is about, do we want to be responsible for the maintenance? And it's only an agreement in principle. If we don't want to, then we'll just say no. Councillor Drayson.
Just going to look at what councillor Jackin, I should know, but I don't know. I would imagine they need planning permission as well and the sustainability of the water will become part of that.
Yeah. Councillor Byrne.
Thank you. Let's just turn around for a moment. Would we be happy as a council saying, at this point, not knowing what it is, there's no way we're ever going to maintain anything at all that they put in place? Because we're only being asked to explore in principle, you know? So what we're saying is, we could say no under no circumstances whatsoever, and I don't think anyone is, is up for that. So at this point, we could really say, yes, we're, we're happy to explore it. And we're not trying to second guess what shape it may or may not be or what the maintenance costs may or may not be, but we're definitely willing to explore it and not ruling it out at this early stage. Is that right?
Pretty much, yeah. So.
Are we proposing that?
I think we need a proposal and it's sort of similar to what it says here, to in principle, to explore taking on responsibility for managing and maintaining the proposed new water feature. So that's a proposal from councillor Tim Peet. Do we have a second? Councillor Byrne, all those in favour of that, please show. All those against? And I'm abstaining as a resident on the neighbourhood board. Thank you. Item 13, that is for noting, they have been in contact and initial investigations have begun. Item 14 is again noting that the conclusion of the external audit has been completed and no matters have been raised. Yay. Really good news.
That's the opposite.
I'm really conscious about time, as I've said. We've done an hour and a quarter and we've got three motions. Do you want to do those motions tonight? Okay. 15A, to consider establishing a regular meeting at all committee chairs and the council chair to review outstanding motions and plan strategic priorities. I've been saying for about 18 months, we have no strategy and our officers are, they have a long list and it's not joined up. And we've either got to do something like that or do something that we've tried before, which is a visioning exercise to build a vision and build a strategy and get somebody in to help us. Can I have a show of hands from councillors? Who's listened to Trevor Lego and his speech that he does online? Do you mean councillors? Okay. In there, he says, free of charge with our e-sal registration fees, he will come in and he will help us build a business plan. We have to do something to be more organised for the future and it's either a business plan, a strategy, getting the, and I put that on there to create this, this debate. It might not end up being the motion. Or we just leave it as it is and get to council meetings and start going down rabbit holes that get us in difficulties that suddenly we don't want to rent, we want to buy because there's no overriding plan. So that's my, that's that motion explained. Councillor Jackin.
I would like to second your motion and make a couple of observations.
Okay.
So I think we're two and a half years or whatever into a four-year term.
Yeah.
And by the time our term ends, it would have been good to achieve some things and to have got our various strategic ducks in order. If this achieves that, then I think it's a good idea.
Okay. Councillor Gossie.
Thank you, Chair. I've just put down two things. One, it will put more pressure on our clerk to do this. And second, we didn't have the devolution. If we didn't have devolution, we'd be going through the strategy priorities already. I think with the devolution and the unknown what's happening and what's going on with assets and Rother it's just made it even worse. So I can't see this being a, I can't see this being a short-term problem. But until the, until we know what's going on with the local government and what's happening and all these assets, then I think we should just basically, it's going to, it's going to just clog up even more. That's what I, that's my thing. It's more pressure on the clerk and the staff to get work done.
Okay. Councillor Drayson.
Totally opposite. I think it will help the clerk because it will, it will get things in the right order and the right priorities. Although we might come back obviously to full council to confirm it, but I think it will help the clerk.
Agreed.
Councillor Thomas.
I support this because, as I say, getting the ducks in order. It's unfair for us councillors to keep piling more and more work on the town clerk unless the town clerk pick and choose the priorities. This is decided to take the load off the town clerk. I think could be present at that meeting. How are we going to know that picture?
I, I need to clarify, it's a non-decision-making. So they're not decision-makers. Councillor Goss.
No, well, that's sort of part of what I was going to say. Basically, it sounds okay as long as there are sort of reasonable minutes that come out directly afterwards so that we all know what's going on. Otherwise, it's a close clique that is deciding what we're doing.
Yeah. Councillor Carroll.
Pretty much the way I was going about it. I think, I think if we've got a clerk here, it could be about half the time just to go by the. I think tonight, something could be covered tonight, proves it, yes, we have to get our.
Yeah, okay. Councillor Earl.
The town clerk today even saying to us, steer me the right way, tell me what you want from me and I'll get it done. Yes, there is a huge workload. There's going to be. The run is a council. There's a town involved here. There is going to be a big workload. Nothing's going to stop that. We're going to keep piling on ideas. We're going to keep piling on jobs to do. But it's also our job to prioritise them, to actually steer the operational side of things in the right direction. And they do need that. They need that from us to know what should we do next? Where can we go? We're jumping from one to another and we're ending up thousands, hundreds of good ideas, but we're actually ending up not finishing them sometimes. And I think that idea of prioritisation and steering, steering the clerk and her team in the right direction could help them uncover some of them.
If we don't try it, we're not going to know, is my view. Councillor Plin.
Yeah, I think we're at danger of contradicting ourselves here because we've just mentioned that it's not going to be a decision-making group. But it's there to plan strategic priorities. So you're going to make decisions because you're going to prioritise things. So I'm, I'm getting a bit confused as to what we want at this, at this regular meeting. There are regular meetings with each chair, with the town, with the clerk prior to a, a, a meeting going ahead. It's not beyond the realms of possibility that during those conversations, you discuss the workload for that committee and discuss there and then the logistical challenges in prioritising some of those motions that are going forward and some of that workload. We've also got to be very, very aware that we could plan a strategy with our priorities in place only to, for events, events, events to take place, particularly while we've got the devolution issue coming through. So as much as I like the, the idea of it, I do think we're getting ourselves in a bit of a quagmire where we're going to have a meeting for a meeting for a meeting. It's the system's there. Talk to the chairs, clerk and chairs, talk and work out strategy for the committees. It's there, do it.
Okay, I need to move on. If you had a speak already, I'm not going to come back to you. Councillor Drayson, you haven't.
I thought I had.
All right, you can't speak again then. Councillor Thomas. Have you spoken this? Right. I've got a second. What I would say is, let's try it. If it doesn't work, it won't work. It's not a decision-maker. So whatever strategy comes out of it, come in with full council. Full council go, yes, we're on it. So.
Sorry, before I go, before you go to the vote, if this motion were to be carried, it would be really good to have an idea of when. I will leave that to the councillors consideration.
Councillor Enston did say a couple of months ago, well, a year ago, so we had, we had a notice, a notice board.
So councillor who? So I haven't you.
Enston, Watson, Charlie.
Ruston.
Ruston, sorry. We've got a, a notice board that had all the things on it. And then one council meeting, we brought it in, looked at it and said, well, that's, that's no obsolete now, so we can take that off. Can't we do that again?
So we can. We've had a list. We went through it before. One committee added one more thing to it, one committee removed one and the other one stayed the same from memory. So that isn't the great idea.
It's been sent paperwork for the next full council meeting.
We've spoken enough about this. I've got a second. I think we should do this in preparation for probably the start of the next financial year to give our clerk January, February and March to get over the precept and everything else. So by the 1st of April. So I've got a second. All those in favour, and I would say as a trial. If it doesn't work, we don't have to carry on doing it. If it doesn't work, it's our council. All those in favour, please show. All those against? That's carried. 15B, councillor Plin.
Yeah, the motion is what it says on here, that the council believes that after Rother District Council have spent taxpayers' money on the refurbishment of the colony that they should devolve, in the spirit of localism act 2011, the freehold of the colony signed to the Bexhill Town Council and not any higher authority or CIC stroke trust. And basically, it's, it's nothing that we've got to do apart from just present it and it is a strategy. And it's coming forward saying that's what we would like to happen.
Okay. Councillor Hessey. Sorry, I thought you'd finished because I thought you read that and.
No, it's just, it's something that we would like to happen. And so it's no onus on the town clerk to do any work with, regarding this. It's no onus on us to sort of push anyone into this. It's just, that's what we'd like to do. And we'd like Rother to sort of take notice. You know, if, if it is in the, in, if you feel it's benefit for that area to be passed down to us, for us to look after, manage and maintain, then please do so because that's what we'd like to happen. And future.
Okay. Councillor Hessey.
Sorry, I thought we'd already put it in press.
Yeah, we have. Let's replicate what we've already done. I didn't want to say that and let you, some of you saw it.
I thought we put it.
We've expressed an interest in it through the last process.
I didn't think it had actually gone through.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Well, I, I stand by it. I mean, if anyone thought it was okay then, they'll think it's okay now.
We have expressed.
I've got a second for it. Then we'll vote it and get it out of the way.
I'll second it.
Sorry, I'm not sure we can because we've voted on expressing the interest in it and that has other stuff to it. And it's inside six months. Can we? Can we do that? Because we've already done the expression of interest. Good question.
Excellent question.
We've already done it.
I mean, it's, it's a strategic view, so it's not really changing an action. It's just reinforcing this is the council's view on what should happen. So I don't see a special motion being necessary. I think it is just, in essence, me potentially emailing Rother to say, we'd really like this on top of the expression of interest. Um, so I don't think this, this special motion would
Okay.
be necessary.
It, I, I would ask councillor Plin, if I may, why just the colonnade site? Because you're referring to a particular government act, but you're singling out one site.
Because I didn't have any room for filling all the rest of the sites. So perhaps as the time goes by, we have some more motions should be probably once a month. Saying, no, I can, council can develop a strategy that way.
I, I really don't know what to do with this. I need help. But we've already asked.
I guess it's up to councillor Plin if he'd like the motions go forward and he's got a second.
Have you got a second for that motion? Okay. So bear in mind, we've already asked for it. We've got a proposal. We've got a second. Anybody else wish to say something? councillor Drayson.
Yeah, it's a bit like the fountains, beware, because if we'd have said this I know we didn't exist six years ago, but if we'd taken it over the last time the colonnade was put right, we would have then had a six hundred thousand pound bill to put it right again.
Yeah.
I think this company is an excellent company and they will do a very good job. But beware what we keep saying, oh, we, we'd love that because it might cost us an awful lot of money.
Be careful what you wish for. councillor Jackin.
Because I think we've already in essence, um, agreed to do what councillor Thomas requesting. I'm going to oppose this motion, but I do support this higher purpose. Which I, I think is consistent with your higher purpose, that we do need to agree a general strategy. Do we want to own things or not?
Yeah. Okay. So we've got a proposal. We've got a second to move it forward. Um, all those in favour of, I'm reading that the clerk is asked to write to Rother with those words. Is that correct?
That's a problem, yeah.
Okay, so proposal and second for the clerk to contact Rother District Council with those extra words. All those in favour, please show. All those against? That's carried. Okay. Move on to fifteen C. Would the council, oh, sorry, councillor Jackin. Getting carried away here.
Read it out if you like.
Um, at the last meeting, we agreed a motion that the town council would support Rother District. Um, view that the.
Target those councils at the end. Councillor Jackin's talking.
Of the unitary authority remains the same as the current Sussex.
Yeah.
Definition.
Yeah.
The government now wants the consultation asking residents their views.
Yeah.
Um, the light proposal is that the town council merely emails what we've already agreed to the official email for the government consultation.
Okay. Do you have a second? Several seconders. Anybody wish to ask councillor Jackin any questions? councillor Plin.
Yeah, I was quite interested in this actually because I looked at the consultation document that came through. And there wasn't a space for parish councils to give a corporate response. It stopped at district level and it asked all the districts, how would you like this to happen? Didn't ask any of the parish councils or town councils and went past the people. So we've been left out of consultation. So as much as I support, yes, we develop a corporate response. I couldn't see the channel that we used for it to be placed into.
Listen, email address and I concur with your observation, which has also been made in several dimensions by the parish councils of northern Rother.
I would suspect the bigger, the higher authority would know that the town council would be in regular contact and would have an email address to log it manually, I would suspect. But have you got, you've got, you've got a second, haven't you?
Yeah, I seconded it. If, if I could just come back a little. I'd be interested to find out, it's all very well having an email address to log it to, but knowing how these consultations work. If you don't use the correct routes, you won't get included in the consultation.
Okay.
And they just miss you off and say, oh, wasn't officially done. So through this process, can we find out how a town council um, takes part in this corporate, gives a corporate response?
I think you might need a motion for that. That's not a part of this.
Develop a response that we might not have a cogwheel. That's why, so through that process.
The, the consultation has, um, two options. You can fill in a form which is exceedingly, uh, detailed and asks more questions than necessary. Um, whereas in fact all we want to say is we want it to be Sussex and there is an email address in, in the consultation form.
Um, under guidance, um, the suggestion is, um, to add a little bit to your motion to save doing a separate motion in another council meeting. Um, and to, and for the clerk to seek clarity on the correct process for town councils to lodge.
Town and parish.
Town and parish councils to lodge feedback on consultations. Would you be happy to have that amended?
Yes.
Are you still happy to settle that? Okay. That deals with both of it. Any other comments? Otherwise I'm going to go to the vote, please.
That's fair, but we can also email it to our four county councillors. Councillors.
Yeah.
And ask them to also.
Yeah.
Make sure it gets to where it should be.
I think they call it lobbying somewhere.
Yes, that's the word.
So all those in favour of that motion, please show. Against abstaining, that's carried. Okay. Moving on to item sixteen, correspondence and matters for information. There are none. Questions from councillors, uh, they're raised and the answers are there.
Excuse me, I've just heard a question regarding, um, a reply to one of those questions. I don't know if I'm allowed to ask the question regarding. It's a question that councillor Blainrove asked regarding CCTV.
Yeah.
And it does say that the, the survey has, has been undertaken. Um, are, is that relevant committee going to get that, uh, documentation pretty soon? Because I don't think it's been disclosed.
It's a review, um.
It's a review.
Review of CCTV, um, by has been undertaken, I mean, is in the process. The meetings are being had and an update will be provided to the unitary committee.
Oh, the way, way it reads it, a review of CCTV has been undertaken.
So it's started.
Yeah, so it is underway. Yeah, yeah. So it's just my bad word.
Okay, so.
Does that mean that you are actually having meetings with the police to see what they've been done? Oh, because the last time I was.
Sorry.
It's all in hand now.
Fifteen seventeen. To consider any new risks to be added to the risk register. Any show of hands? No, moving on. Item eighteen, date of next meeting is the seventeenth of December twenty twenty five. Motions to be received by the sixth of December. So at this point, I'm now going to close this meeting to members of the public. Thank you.